Mr. Nagels, you think roll call for the record please?
Sure thing. Commissioner Mahaco?
Here.
Hunter Pierce?
Here.
Commissioner Boriosso?
Here.
Commissioner Radkowski?
Here.
Commissioner Hury?
Here.
I'll just run through you guys.
Here.
Let's help you with this.
Thank you. Welcome everybody for attending July 2nd, 2020, 2020 caucus meeting. We are streaming live on Facebook tonight. If there's any public comments via Facebook, the call-in number is 1-571-748-4021. I'll repeat the number again. And the PIN number is 018-710-549-NOW. Again, the PIN number is 018-710-549-NOW. I'll take any public comments via the phone at this moment. As the record shows, we're ready for the time to read the phone. And we'll move on to our meeting. We have a presentation tonight from JH Fireworks for final main development application presentation. I do not see any other residents from the public inside the meeting tonight. So that said, Mr. Jarros, I think you might present if you were more welcome.
You're over here.
Yes.
Um, if that was a final meeting?
Okay, I'm present.
He says prop distance and I, I, I.
Uh, Nicole, Commissioner Nicole Witter is present.
My apologies, Nicole.
Before I take it off, perhaps I could hand these to Mr. Witter. That's a long question for the board. Just to give the board about my understanding of what's being proposed. With me this evening is Matt Doopman, our civil engineer. To my right, if the board recalls, this application received preliminary line of approval in February this year. Be thereafter proceeded to submit final plan approval. The layout of the site appears on the plant in front of you on Leezel. And I handed out a color rendering of what the site is planning to look like after renovation to the existing block building construction we're building on the footprint of the old building on the western portion of the site. We've gone through planning commission review this month and we came out of the planning commission meeting at their last meeting with favor, our recommendation in favor of granting final plan approval. And over here answering the questions the board has with respect to the proposal we see.
There's two questions that I have, Mr. Jarros. One, I believe there was some discussion about a six-foot right-of-way.
Yes.
And there was some also, some other discussion about the PENDOT review, the project that you were working on. Has all that been resolved? Has that been worked out?
I'm gonna let Matt explain that again. My understanding was that we were given information from PENDOT with regards to the width of the right-of-way that affects the site. And then through county engineer, township engineer, we were informed that perhaps that was not good information. And we take a look at that and Matt will explain that. And I think in essence, it doesn't impact the site as far as what's proposed. Although I think Matt will explain that because of the shift of the right-of-way, we will have to talk with PENDOT about making certain improvements along Trichester Avenue. But I'll let Matt explain that.
Thank you. Good day, Matt Doopman. Yes, during the plan preparation processes, procedure that we request right-of-way information from PENDOT. We go out of form, we give them a map, a plan of exactly where your site is located. We did all that for a very exact location. And the information we got back from PENDOT was actually a 47-foot block right-of-way. And we had some other data that just as a start, they said it was sometimes, sorry, 45-foot block right-of-way. And we had some historical data that define 50, so that's gonna be shown on the plans, 50-foot right-of-way. The county's office, I guess, while doing the street skate project in the township, had access to some plans that were associated with I-95. And they showed that right-of-way, Trichester Avenue, the bridge over I-95 to Johnson Avenue, basically our front, had been increased from a total width of 50 to a total width of 62. Difference of 12 feet, so had for that being on our side, we get six foot difference. So new plans that we prepared, we moved that right-of-way up in the northern direction 6 feet. It gets closer to the building, but the building is just outside the right-of-way. The building is not proposed for the county right-of-way, it's just a couple things outside the right-of-way. And as far as the impact to the site, John is correct. That it's not affecting anything we're proposing in terms of hearing the township, or the site, there's green space, providing the street skate sidewalk and decker van and sand posts, all that remains unchanged. What it does is it increases the net area slightly of the tract. It increases the building coverage because the area gets smaller, but it's still within form of zoning. And actually, the impervious coverage out there now is going down. Because that entire area, which was, which we lost to right-of-way, was all impervious. So we still had the same amount of green space, less total area. So it creates the percentage loss, you get more green space and less impervious. The, um, in terms of our contact with PENDOT, we had been in the process of supplying PENDOT with an HOP application for the curb. This is several months ago, four or five months ago. And when we submitted a preliminary plan to the local office, they asked for the FEED agreement, what have you. They got back and told us, you don't need to apply for an HOP because you are working outside the right-of-way. That 50-foot right-of-way came right to the front face of the curb line, Trichester Avenue. Which would sound odd, but you've seen that happen time to time, the right-of-way right inside the curb. So they indicated to us, you're not working inside the right-of-way. You can basically proceed, just let us know when you're gonna start and what you need to have control and what have you. Now that that right-of-way has moved up 6 feet, we are in the right-of-way. So we fully expect that we will need an HOP to replace the curb in the, in the right-of-way. But again, that's gonna be more of a replacement in kind. We asked to replace the curb as a damage number one, and to remove the curb cut, which is closer to the intersection with Johnson Avenue. So I believe that's gonna be a new undertaking, but it's an undertaking that we're gonna have to proceed with on the left. In terms of the plan response, we had a review from the township engineer. We addressed those comments. Actually, Alex and I had a little coordination for some touch-up items that we have something to care of. And the only outstanding item has been this right-of-way issue, which just came up a little bit. So we hopefully, the township can provide some conditional plan approval. Certainly condition upon us receiving the PENDOT permit required and the other conditions.
So it'd be a fair statement to say that once you go through your HOP and PENDOT does any type of review and they ask you to make adjustments, that you could, that takes my work of willing to make any adjustments.
We'll, we'll have to.
Right. Work, because I have to do that. So if I give a conditional. Well, we're gonna vote on it next week. And I would, I'm gonna come in tonight, present, or ask, or ask any questions. And that gives us a week to have a little dialogue back and forth in case there's any more, any more discussion. But they're deadline is July 23rd, I believe. So our commissioners meet next week. So that's, that's the one that we, that we would need to have to vote on it again. So is that one condition that we, that we could? I, I, that's one conditional item that I'd like to see in the, in the resolution staple that. And then once you have your review from PENDOT, if there's anything that needs to be adjusted, if you guys are willing to.
Well, it, it happens.
Right.
Absolutely.
Will we give the township an inform?
Yes.
That's, that's, that's what it is. In order for them to see, they, they, they have to get the HOP now that it's in the right-of-way. So if they have the HOP, and that's not given the HOP unless they do. So it's, it's, it's like six of one.
So if we give approval next week, it's a conditional.
Correct.
So if they have to get their HOP.
Yes.
We will have to state in the resolution. Right now, there's ten conditions.
Yeah.
If you look at the resolution. Right. Click. You know, once, once PENDOT gets this application. The issue is if PENDOT says, if you do not tell them what the government wants.
Again, that's gonna be conditional upon them getting their HOP. If that's what they're saying, they need or is required, they can argue back and forth as to whether it's required or not. I don't think it makes that much of a difference to us at this stage in the game, or shouldn't, because that's a PENDOT.
No, but I was saying, but I was saying West Peak's in here and it's, it's a great financial interest. The island at the end of that property.
Well, that's, again, that's gonna be something they're gonna have to deal with with PENDOT. We're gonna approve a, I assume that we're going to, any approval that we give will be based on this condition. It should not be. That should not be a reaction to hold the fact.
Is that section, that's what you're gonna agree with?
Certainly, we're willing to tell their plan.
Is that rapid enough, and that's going to affect any of this?
Well, I, I think that's one of the reasons why we, we, I think we had asked to do a PENDOT review. But, you know, PENDOT's gonna review with, PENDOT knows the projects that they're gonna be dealing with all Trichester Avenue. Whether, whether they're gonna grant that or not.
Well, Pierce, if I were something to find out. I, I heard a mention that I haven't seen, please, to see exactly what's.
I just don't know if we can hold for something that may or may not happen.
Oh, no, I'm just, I don't know if it will affect things all, so.
Yeah, well, that's, again, that's, yeah, we don't have to deal with that. We appreciate that, it's okay. We'll look into that.
If I'd like to comment, Mr. Niels was kind enough to provide me with a draft of the resolution that county should make consider. And I just wanted to point out, the A of the plan, the last revision of the current plan is made for 2021. And not people's 2022.
Can I do it in the draft for a second?
Which line of that?
That would be the end of the first paragraph, referring to G. Doopman's son, Lance, dated June 12, 2019. Last revised should be May 13, 2020. And the now there for paragraph refers to preliminary land development, that should be final. Just wanted to point that.
Thank you. Listen, uh, just looking at this check out notice. It's on Mr. Self. Is there any green space at all down this building, or is it along Mahaco? Now, I mean, if you can make out, I can approach the plan here a little bit. We do have green area in front of the building, especially between the existing block building and the, what would be the building structure of the building. And then green area around the perimeter, and then there are decked islands and then parking field also. So I think it will affect site was, for all intents and purposes, completely impervious. So we, we have through this process, for a paramount green area in this site. Now, is there an exit, mentions on Johnson Avenue? And Trichester Avenue? There's presently two on each road, and one on each road closest to the intersection is being moved. Also to. The intersection with Johnson, Trichester Avenue. Yes.
Commissioner Witter, I know you're on the line listening, do you have any questions? Commissioner Witter?
I don't have any questions. Mr. Pierce answered the question that I had regarding holding up the process, so I'm good.
If there's any other comments on the board?
Just one more. If, if this is approved next week, does the HOP, because I know this seems to be an issue with the law on it. That doesn't hold their progress of starting the project just because of the HOP. Would they be granted to a public, or they not?
You have the HOP, so that you, you're fully qualified before you can build. So that's all goes through that process. So that's that post lane development application, pre-construction section that developers go through, where they work through all their third-party approvals, and they go through the back and forth funding process through PENDOT, 69 days, depending on how many submissions or you need to make decisions.
Mr. Niels is for it.
I appreciate you.
All right. Everyone, thank you for coming in. We will be back soon on it.
Right.
Thank you very much. You are mainly on. Thank you. Next presentation is from Aldis End and Final Main Development. Is there any representative in the mic?
Yeah, go around, sure. I'm with my partners.
Thank you. So if you have a presentation?
Yep.
Very. Do you have plans under packets? So I have to go back and forth for the, the. I don't believe these people.
I'm getting them.
Well, let me start by saying that the plan is substantially what was given preliminary approval back and forth. As a matter of fact, I don't know from a plan view perspective, if anything, if it's changed.
I believe these are plans that we have to make the ones that we're.
So since we received preliminary approval, we've been working with PENDOT on, on HOP permits and the single permit. We've been working with conservation district to get their approval, and working with our county engineer to find us a plan set that have the additional details required to sit up in this site. We must, the county commission last week seeking certain issue final approval. Granted, that recommendation, also seeking a conditional final approval next week. You do the same thing, they have to comply with any eight or more things. You know, the, the HOP is on them to obtain, but obviously, you know, that's part of the process. They have to get any, you know, necessary permits and things for that. The difference here is those applications have been submitted and reviewed multiple times. So we're getting close on, on both those ones. I think the only, just let the board, I think the only item that was, um, it, the one item that was this, that was discussed was about that audible pedestrian signal. And I believe that you guys were willing to put that in, that's part of your condition.
I can address that, like, we received a draft, or at least a common of the conditions. We, you know, are. One is the audible signal. Certainly agreeable to doing that. And that's something our track consultants said would be easy to assert in our applications currently made review without a submitted plot, which is, which is nice. Also requested was a new test on their power supply. And there was a comment regarding two years of maintenance, so I'd like to address those two comments.
Sure.
We are coming back to the township within the next few weeks on phase two. Similar to our discussions on the road. And the lowest us conversation regarding project costs and trying to get this thing built. We'd like to, we don't know if it's warranted, if the township is mandated, if that happened. We respectfully request that that conversation be deferred to phase two. We didn't know about this until last week, that we have cost ramifications, that they also have permitting timeline ramifications that we, we would have been, been able to.
And I did discuss that with, with attorney for the project. Their concern was, not their concern, but they, it's going out that they would be back in on phase two. And that if the USB was mandated, they would like to address that in the second phase, the second part of that. Due basically to cost considerations, to get this first part to closing, so as not to delay anything else with PENDOT. I say we discuss that, you know, tonight and before the board. I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I defer to the, to the engineers, and I hasten to the timing of that insertion in there. But I think that they do have a, you know, a balance point that, you know, we just brought up in last week, and it is a pretty considerable cost factor. And I think it would be appropriate for the, for the township to consider that as a second phase, or the second part of that, if it's not even necessary.
And then third component in, in that, was a request for a two-year maintenance program that you would be responsible for as developer. I'm a little unsure what that is. I know as, as the developer who's responsible for construction of those improvements and that will require that we post an improvement bond for the.
Right. I think that's continued to two years, that, that's for two.
And that'll be converted for maintenance, which is, I think, 18 months.
So. Well, it depends on the, of the site improvement and, and when we actually take, quote, possession or actually becomes active.
So is that condition the word such that you're responsible for the maintenance bond that PENDOT requires? Because it's a minimum of 18 months, I'm not sure if it's 18 or 24.
I think we generally require 24.
Through PENDOT? USL PENDOT?
Through our, through the township, we require those. At least that's what I've seen in the past.
But it's, it's through PENDOT, so how is that?
Well, I don't know that, I don't know who's taking ownership of the light and through the signal, so I'm not sure of that.
This penalty will take ownership.
Right, and so it's not.
Okay. Well, we'll take ownership, but PENDOT requires us, as the all our improvements, all the improvements, will require us to maintain and maintain bond and for at least 18 months, and maybe 24, but I think.
And that's what, I think 24 is consistent, I think that's where it's coming from.
So. So just make sure we're talking about.
Not only people getting.
It's not, it's not a group. It's the maintenance.
Yes. This was a, this was just presented to you about this pedestrian signal, correct?
Yes.
So my understanding is?
Well, I'm not saying, the audible point that I.
The audible.
The un, uninterruptible power source is the issue.
Right. The, the audibles did something that was just recently discussed with you, correct?
Oh, okay.
Okay, my, my question is this, it was, it was told to me that, it was reported to you that it is not required by the township. I was just wondering, who from the township said that?
That's right, we need to ask you that question this evening, actually. That's from permanent coverage. And I had her back on my, our track, it's all handles, the single package. As a matter of fact, we always sign the application and due to the clear sign. But then also next week, or, yeah, hiding it out, we would fill in blank with that, about seeing someone. I'm looking to hear who we heard from.
Yeah.
Regardless of that story, we're committed to it. And we had, we would do it if the township had said they wanted it. In fact, asked once there.
So I just little bit know if it was said to you or not, that's all. I will clarify that, but I'll check and consult with them.
Thanks.
And, you know.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask that.
I just thought I'm a portion of the people, a lot less conversations, so we find out. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, here HOP, do you have an entrance in one giant?
It's all, it's all no road, as a matter of fact, we're eliminating existing residential product that enters off of all the giant. And we're purging that street skate, as if street skate standards were replaced at our school shrine. We put it in place in the township.
So if that I can't see you guys the last time you were here, in regards to the ADA grants, which was something different, which was added on, they required you guys to do it. So why, why, why don't we need an HOP if you're not even coming off of Trichester Avenue?
You just said, is it handicapped or not?
Just because.
And also because we're closing the curb cut, like with the signal work.
Right, so basically, you're doing what they requested, so hopefully.
Required, yeah.
Yeah, through PENDOT, one, the addition, the additional ADA grants goes that you give, you guys do it, not them. And basically, we, I just want to, want to see any delays on your, because of Dan, putting all this on you, and I understand you just found out about the audible light or the signal, if you're willing to do that. I agree with what you're saying about the emergency power and all that stuff, or the thing. That is quite, quite expensive to be just started on the last week, when we've had this application forever. And it's kind of odd that, as usual, something's adding on again, again, and again. But I'm glad to clarify the thing about, it may have been just a week ago, whatever it's been.
And if you have any suggestions on how we can avoid having PENDOT also on applications, I don't.
I don't, I just, I wish I knew too.
Do you know what the cost is gonna be for UPS, what was the project that we were working on with PENDOT to do most of the township for roughly, uh, $88,000 for multiple intersections, or just.
So the estimates we received, which was desktop, you know, the sharing estimates on contractor, $8,000 to $10,000 for UPS, but the additional issue is if there's not enough room in the existing controller cabin. There might be a new controller cabin, that's an additional expense. Then where do we put it? Do we need easements or additional right-of-way from other property owners, that gets into the whole, whole.
So you're willing to do that on the second phase, however, no matter what.
That's right, we may need additional assistance, for example, if we need additional right-of-way or easement from a property owner on one of the other corners. But we'll, we'll talk about that, we'll have, we'll have a few months for phase two to work through this.
Do you believe the phase two construction will be still, like, if you go through, you're gonna start the process with an application, or will it be soon?
If we start in two weeks, the likely scenario of an auto zone will be open for operations, people are constructing. Phase two, given the timeline that we've seen.
That, you don't know that would create any kind of additional safety issues or anything, additional traffic from the auto zone at that intersection, if it was to go out because of the electric going out into the area, if you know. The idea behind this is to keep the intersection up, and it'd be better for power levels, correct?
I think that's right.
So, so assuming that, you know, there will be no, the additional traffic, elements, obviously warranted something like this eventually, but you don't see it causing any kind of problems in that area in the short term?
If it is, this auto zone is very low generative, so I can say per additional taxi to that intersection.
Yes.
All right, I'll take your hands for the questions from the board. Thank you for coming in. Nicole? Nicole, do you have a question? Commissioner Witter, any questions? I don't think he has any question. Thank you for coming in.
No questions.
We will be back soon on it.
Thank you.
And do we give a presentation then as well, or just on? I don't think so, I mean, you gave, I mean, if there's any other questions that later arrives throughout the week. I don't, I don't take another presentation if they require.
There's two more, and very quick ones. Number one, do any of the tenants, I see that we're on, how old, other items on the agenda?
Uh, no, it's, uh.
The presentation is not being considered.
I mean, there might be some, some small discussion about the move, but we talked about, through our, through your presentation, but we're not, we're not voting on it.
We have members, we have members online, so.
All right. Yeah, I mean, if anything comes up, we would definitely make you aware.
And, and I have number two, thank you, Mr. Jarros, who won't hear me thank him, but we double-checked and we also had an incorrect revision date in the decision, so we'll get it correct.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That said, we'll move on to our professionals report, and we'll start with our engineer.
Thank you for, uh, making the presentation of the engineers report tonight. So I'll start off with just a highlight of some of the items from, first, for the Lala project. I'm sure you're, you're all aware that the, the, the PENDOT for Lala has just recently been approved. The signal plans themselves are currently under review, so that we could recommend the signature on the TE 164 for the signal plans, but we'll be reviewing that for you. The sanitary sewer is still currently under review by the SCBA. We have municipal escrow items that we are waiting to get some better direction from a solicitor as far as how the separation of the two parties will be.
Right, the, the request that was made, so the, the request that was made is that they divide the public site improvements into things that.
Right, the request that was made, so the request that was made is that they divide the public site improvements into things that the developer is going to do and things that the owner of the property is going to do, if I'm not mistaken. So they have asked for, rather than having a single agreement, they've asked, we have two different agreements, essentially the same, for each party's responsibility. I've indicated, and they've sent me different municipalities, forms that they have utilized. I reviewed those, I'm okay with it, I just need to touch base with Lisa about a couple of things that were in there and how we should proceed on that. But I, overall, from a concept perspective, I don't have a problem with it.
So, so does that mean, I'm just saying, you talked about this last month, about phase one, phase two, trying to keep.
Um, well, it's not phase one, phase two, it's actually, it's all part of the same project.
Right.
But the builder, or I guess the developer is responsible for, I'm sorry, the landowner is responsible for providing a, a slap, a slap, whatever, a, a ready site. So they're doing all those things like grading, it's like all that's the site work. The developer is responsible for some of the other site improvements. So they've taken the estimates that they have and divided to who's responsible. So normally, when we just have a single agreement. They've asked if we have one agreement with the developer, one agreement with the owner. I've reviewed, and I'm okay with that, assuming the board is okay, I just need to confirm a couple of things with Lisa for that, so.
Same, and I think to make sure it's clarifications that, that the developer is, I believe, the party that's doing the site improvements on the Wawa site.
Right.
But up to a certain level of pad improvements.
Yeah.
And the Wawa continues that, so it's not like one escrow solely for Wawa's property, another was solely for the, the office. The developer's actually, generally, constructing the entire site in one phase.
Yes.
But he stops his site improvements, maybe at the subgrade or the crushed down.
Whatever, the pad site.
Whatever, whatever Wawa.
Pad reg site.
Yeah, so, so then, so it's not like it's two different contractors, it's one contractor, you're our Wawa, and then the, then Wawa picks up, so.
That's right, that's, that's my understanding.
I think that you're going to be trying to focus, I mean, because, because once we, once we figure out how the numbers pan out, I guess it's a more matter if there's any issues that develop during construction where.
Who's responsible for what, yes. And, and that's what I'm working through with that, so yes, we're, we're moving along with it. I don't have a problem with that, I just need to confirm a couple of things with, with the township, so.
So that would allow, when we do the site work on the schoolhouse, the office part, we're reporting, do you do the site work on the other side?
No, it's strictly for the pad site for the, for the actual store.
Yeah, I think there was some confusion still there that this was never contacted you about. I had a conversation with our building code officer, and he was at, calling, touched back and probably applying though, to figure out how this was going to work. Because obviously they want to, they're looking to move someone into that building.
Right.
However, a B C O is going to have to re-sign off on that, that, you know, A D A accessible routes and things like that. But if the, if the site work is being done under a different plan at a different time. So there, there was a couple of little things they needed to work out.
Yeah, and, and, okay, I think we can get that worked out.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I don't mean at later points, but the intent was to renovate the old schoolhouse, get that completed. So you can move, really, sort of, take and see in there. And then you demo the other buildings, so you can build the Wawa. That, that was my understanding, is that they were going to get the schoolhouse done first.
Well, I mean, that would be their decision.
That may be, yeah, that, that may be, I'm not saying, but I think this is a different issue, I think.
Because the site work is all more than that, the work that they didn't separate. But they have a storm management facility that's on, on one part, that needs to be spent to the Wawa property, but. So I mean, it's, they, I guess it's just.
The agreements have to make sure that they, that sure they join and that the responsibilities and the monetary aspects all add up and they're joined together.
Right.
But the agreement, the responsibility are with two different points. It, it's a little bit of a hybrid, it's a little different, but.
It's a little different than before.
It, but that's.
I guess just the, maybe, I don't want to try to keep confusing, but, you know, in a lot of, those, these facilities, all over the place with the two center contracts. But the, the bigger complicated part now is that there's two different uses and two different facilities, want to say property.
Correct.
Is trying to get.
That, that's a good thing.
So that kind of like triggers it more than the volatility that's.
Right.
So. Second item is the Kate Glennon project. H A Jork is the contractor that, the township, that has been utilizing to finalize the site improvements that they recently asked for from previous developer. So the clearing of the vacant lots is approximately ninety-eight percent complete by Jork. And then the ton of material work that they're doing on the facility is also about ninety-five percent complete. And towards the contractor, whether dependent, that they're anticipating that they should have the work completed in approximately two to three weeks. Next item. Next item to discuss was the Chichester Avenue Street State project. Contractor for that will be Premier Construction. And the temporary, as far as the start date for that work is, we're trying to obtain any, any progress from Pendott and get additional temporary access easements from some of the property owners that we have not received yet. So depending on that, how the two run through, we're hoping that, that I'm going to participate in the start date in thirty, maybe forty-five day range, but I'm hoping it was at thirty days for, for the Shuysgate project. As far as the other private items that I have here, the Mill Bradley Chi, traffic simulation that should be in your packet. The twenty minutes you can keep in part, sign up, information's also in your packet. The resolutions are both the others, I'm finally developing, Jake's following, they have all these in your packets. So under other items, the last thing I have to brief you on is the Peak Street Storm Sewer Project. This was a drainage improvement project that's involving some additional inlets and storm sewer pipe to replace the path for Peak Street. And we were tasked with preparing plants so that the township forces could do this replacement work. And the way the script work was presented was to try to help capture and try to inject the water barriers from, 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 from the Greenwood side. Now that the plans were prepared, the joint property owner has seen it and was concerned that the project does not capture any wealth that's coming from the Bethel Avenue side. Well, just according to the neighbors saying that the drainage area has uphill on the upside, kind of coming through the backyard across the street. Canny floor of his property. The runoff concentrates roughly at about an utility pole across the street and then, and then it crosses over Peak Street towards his driveway. And then the water cuts across his property, through his driveway and continues to our system's drinking. So he was asking if we could, the township would consider extending the Peak Street storm sewer designed to include capture the runoff that's coming from the Bethel side. We took a, just a quick presser and look. It's from a construction standpoint, it's fairly reasonable, and then approximate construction price. It should hopefully be under twelve to fifteen thousand dollar range, because I'm just going to put that top pricing using contractors personally, because the township forces really want to be including property overhead and things like that. They're, they're just, you know, that cost back, the materials will be less, but I'm, I'm just guessing, just roughly, twelve fifty thousand, right? You, you know, if that handle, you get, you need to do some additional toe work across the street and this property, so that we can make sure that we try and vary the price and get some additional, I think, time with, with any of the utility on the street and then try to design a short section, uh, so. You could, let us know, you, you just to, I think the plans to include that.
So you, you need a motion next week to authorize further work in terms of the.
So, I hope you'll survey and additional work to figure plans to include that for the drainage.
Do you think this is necessary?
It, I mean, I know we look at the, the toe bug, or, you know, we do know that the runoff is coming from both the races naturally and does here at that point. I, I mean, I personally haven't looked at it for many, for a rainfall event, I use a fairly decent water shit, so.
If you remember last, about a year and a half ago, we were buying to a major project over there. But the people downstream are concerned about the amount of water that would be pumped in and created, even though all the water is going to flow that way. But we weren't able, there, there's just no, I'm sorry, there's just no real will to do it. So if we had done this, this would have been addressed as part of that project. So we, this is the thing that we had borrowed money for as part of this, for the additional plus to come out of capital funds or, I mean, we need to sort of make a portion of that way. You know, the equipment not be put for the, the supply.
Just the fuel.
Yeah, so that's what we would be next week, is to prove that we expand the scope of work, if people would consider that at least.
So you're saying you guys are going to somewhat design it for us, and our guys should be able to complete it. You just want to make sure, now, this gentleman, okay, that he's going to have a storm drain in front of his house. I mean, I know he wants it to be fixed, that's basically what's going to happen.
Well, we're going to have to get a motion for him, just for him to, for the other landowner. And he, that's what brought it up, is we, she, this is what showed, received in the, the easement, as a land, and that's what prompted his concern. So I think he realized that he needs to include it.
The only gap there with this project right now is due to us kind of going to smaller crews at this time, which is a little bit difficult to pull this off from a construction perspective in the very near future. But it is on their, it's on their list of things to do. It's going to be, it's rather more screwed to be able to do.
I don't think we'd be starting with any gap sooner, so we, I mean, within the next couple of months, I, that's the way it's, I'll do that at least a couple of months. Yeah, thanks for clearing that, it does, Mr. Secretary. We could be past that problem button.
Correct, so relying on jobs right now for the future.
So I just, I have a couple of comments, but I'm going to save them for my report, but the one thing I'd like to address now is the Giddens Park for the Wawa project. I think the board has reviewed the plan, I believe that we're all happy with the current layout. I think the only issue is, the board to beware of is the height of the wall, to hide the power source signal behind it. So I really don't want to hold up anything else over the height of the wall, as the board's happy with the layout. I, you know, I just, I like to freeze the background. Get this part, yeah, for, for the, for the Wawa.
I believe that the, the deal they had, they were going to try to move upon that, the side, you're talking about the wall, they were going to try to hide their, cover it inside the walls.
The email that I've received was, the question was the height of the wall. It, it didn't talk about me, it just talked about the height of the wall to hide the power box behind it. So I, it, that's the only thing that they have to work out, great, but I like to freeze the background, so that way we can just move, move, move forward.
I think, with the plant town, it's the middle part where the, the possibly is higher, because it blocks, then the side walls step down. I mean, this is what I had, and it's, there was tent for, for the, because of the boxes, I said, he said, and it's high or something like that, almost seventeen, yeah, this. So the middle, the middle part of the front, where the front wall down, down, down the, that they, they, I'm looking at the plan to do that, but I'm not anxious to remember. We're at the meeting here, that the suggestion was, is we want to hide it.
Right, they were going to do the work, but then they put the box in the center, you can see the, the side end, the higher part, the middle part's higher, over the box, and the arms are stepped down. I think that's, I think there was just a concern on how.
So I think the box is. So then, right, so I guess they're just going to make sure they narrow down the, the access factor to the box.
Yeah, I mean, I, I believe the layout's good, so we can freeze that background, just need the board, like, the height of the wall to, to hide the, right. And then we can put that to bed and move, move on.
I have one more thing, the application we got, is that, Stuart, this application for the traffic signal, is that for the auto zone?
Yeah, I was, what was your answer, you was referencing the, the work that we've done on that scene.
Move, let's move on to this list of work. Thank you, Mr. President, my report is in the, is in your packet, just a couple of items. We prepped an intended planning commission meeting, both of these applications were there, as well as several other matters that were put planning toward. I think we worked pretty well together, we were able to work out some issues, had the planning commission that, you know, may not have been clear till they came up to the board. So I think it was good that we were there to be able to do that. We reviewed the C U C contracts for energy purchase, they are appropriate under that set of circumstances, shouldn't the board choose to, to go with that group? We finalized developers' agreement and escrow agreements, professional fee escrow agreements for the Willowbrook Clubhouse project. We view to finalize the contracts for the Jennifer Way project, finalize easements for Peak Street Stormwater project, although I understand we may get a third estimate. So once you get, once the engineers get the legal descriptions, we can turn that around relatively quickly, so we'll get that sorted away as well. We initiated drafts for developers' agreement escrow, public site improvements for Wawa project, which is what I was talking about, for about two different sets of agreements. We've been engaged in that, once we get that sorted away, that should move through very quickly. We addressed several matters related to the Auto Zone project, dealing with several issues related to liens on four oh one nine Yorktown Drive. We've provided some information and I will review the information that was presented to us. I don't think it directly impacts us, because I think the first line of the document that was presented indicates that municipal liens are not extinguished at a share of sale. It's exactly what it said first, so I just got, I didn't understand why they were presenting that, because I think that just clearly says that. But we'll, I'll address that and give you a, a written opinion on that as well. Because I know that, that they contacted you directly, so, you know, we'll certainly deal with that. I reviewed the COVID nine plant reutilization of the Township Indoor Recreation Facility. We did research regarding zoning change, excuse me, related to microbreweries or the potential changes in our zoning code and what that would involve. We responded to an issue related to thirty-eight oh seven Chichester Avenue ongoing violations. Research and drafting in order is regarding A T Vs and dirt bikes, I expect the draft to be available within the next week or so, hopefully before the next meeting next week. All other matters were routine in nature, we do have two extension requests, one for the Bethel Avenue zoning map, amendment extension in eighty hundred Golfer Avenue, a planning extension. Other than that, everything is in the works, sir.
What's the timeline for the, by for the re.
We, we have no timeline, there's just a question as to whether or not we wanted to amend our zoning ordinance to include the potential to add in microbreweries. We don't have to do anything, but I was asked to look at what that process would be to put it in the commercial district.
Well, so the way, the way that it reads now. Yeah, I guess if I was a lawyer, then a lot. But you just said, I'll express like that. I mean, the way I read it, it says, there's, the wording can, could maybe be interpreted where it is acceptable.
I agree, I agree with it, but we don't want, we don't want it to be, we don't want it to be questionable one way or the other.
So we can change the wording so it's clear.
That, that's what my task was to do.
That's, I guess that's my, when I said my timeline is, that's what I'm going to have to.
That's, I guess that's my, when I said my timeline is that's okay, that's been completed.
It has not been completed, no, because I'm looking at, we may need to add more than just the wording, I think is the issue. So I'm, I am looking into that and I looked at a couple of other ordinances to see how they fit in, or is that a next one? Yeah, I, I hope to have something to do with it.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
What's, what's a district where you allow them now?
I believe it's, I believe it's light industrial, commercial two, and that may be a, well, there's a question into whether we won't allow them at all, that's what the question is.
Or is there any, the zoning ordinance does not have a defined, does not have a definition of a microbrewery or, or, if you go to the Brewers Association, they've put out labels that they want municipalities to put into their, their codes that call for three different types of these places, one is more like a restaurant, one's more of like a uh, like a food, candy, cannery, like those type of things. Right now, the way I was going to read it is in the LI districts, I'm sorry, IC.
IC, IC station, yeah.
Going back to my own base there, uh IC is industrial, commercial, and in the industrial, commercial, you allow for restaurants, um and some of these, they interpreted as restaurants from times to times.
And manufacturing, so the two, so the two of them kinda mesh, so the question is, does it need to be a special exception, does it need to be? And so, so the goal is, right, because there's alcohol, so the goal is to come up with, with a definition if we need to amend our zoning ordinance to include specifically microbreweries or that type of, the similarities.
Does this, does this A M A regulation, is only the.
I'm sure they do, well, not on locations, that would be up to the zoning, like that.
You also have some night crews that want some outside entertainment, maybe some of that, so I have some stuff for you that I've researched.
Right, so, and that's what I'm saying, it may be more than just a simple change of language to include microbreweries as an, as an appropriate use, because some of them, some of these microbreweries, as the township manager said, there's different levels, some are just a straight manufacturing facility with like a tasting room, but a lot of them have, you know, entertainment, you know, they, yeah.
Some have a cellar, some have a main hotel.
Yeah, and restaurants, so I'm gonna work with, with Barbara to make sure that we have that all sorted away as to what we're, what we're really looking for now.
I know, just to put it on record, I do now, I always downforce orders out last year, and they converted an old horse farm, a place a few years ago, into one of these, and it was a, it was a barn, converted all these beers you could taste and trust me, do not cheat, like it also had through.
Oh yeah, I think there's all different levels.
It's a nice thing that we're looking for.
Right, and some are making the beer right on the side, right, that's where you come into this. And that's, that's where the manufacturing aspect of this, and that's where they're saying, well, you might be able to squeeze it in here, well, I, I don't think we wanna get into a, a battle of maybe squeezing it in there, we'd rather have it just.
Processing, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, sure. All right, uh, there's other questions for our, our listener, we'll move on to our managers report.
Good evening, everyone, uh we've got a couple of items in reference to PENDOT. Uh the first item is that we've received a offer to purchase uh and some of the adjust compensation for the section of what we turned out on for the doll park that they will need for the uh roundabout to be put at Bethel and Bill, the offer uh direct damage is twenty thousand six hundred dollars, number easement of one thousand seven hundred dollars, the total damage is all for twenty four thousand three hundred. I think that that is a reasonable offer for the slipper of land that they are, that they need, so however, I'm not this was here, so.
We, we did review, I did review that, I, I think I say that, we did review, you know, again, it's a small piece of land and, you know, I think we want this project to go correctly, so if it matters, plus we get money, we can utilize it for improvements to whatever we want to.
And then the, the second item is a, an additional offer as well, we're gonna receive the three of these, uh this is one of them in reference to uh one of our properties, well, three twenty-two, and the dollar amount is escaping the bear for the compensation.
Seven, seven thousand some odd dollars.
Yeah, it's a few thousand dollars. Um and again, this is a actual part of what's currently open space and they need a temporary construction, permanent, access, so that'll be going in front of you. Uh a little bit different forms, the, the, the first one, the, the first one is the PENDOT's kind of informal, we do these on these types of projects, the second one is the more formal, through A E com, we'll be receiving two additional from A E com, it's all part of those partial takes along, we come to the construction of the property. Uh the third item I have from PENDOT is, as you may remember, there's a public meeting in reference to uh a, the Chitester Avenue safety project where they proposed to place dual roundabouts that involve in all roundabout Chitester Avenue. Further today, I forwarded you an email response from Clint Spardon, as I asked him uh questions as to if the township was not interested in that project or is interested in that project, that will matter. It appears that this has indicated that if the commissioners do not agree with the PENDOT putting in the roundabouts there, that they would be able to signalize intersections, however, PENDOT's standpoint is that this is a highway safety project, not a congestion project, and the safest method to reduce the amount of crashes and fatalities there are the roundabouts, and they can't quantify that they will, that stop sign or traffic signals will reduce the amount of deaths there than they can through their, their studies for the roundabouts. So what we have to do is we do have to respond to them, um I would say that that should be something next week, whether, and we'll basically authorize the township manager to send a letter indicating favor or non-favor for the roundabouts.
He also, he also in that letter indicated that there's some costs in terms of maintaining the traffic signals, which would eventually be our responsibility as opposed to having the roundabouts, which costs a lot less to maintain.
Correct, so as, as like the surrounding comment earlier today, that once those uh intersections improvements are done, those signals, they become our responsibility, uh so you would have a major responsibility to the intersections that they report out, we would only then be responsible for them interpretation.
Like, how does that work? They demand something to go up and then dump, dump the cost on us, it's, they're running into the same issues with stormwater management, they're trying to put everything on municipalities, they are trying to do everything they can to offset, offset, that's a good way to put it, that is the word, so, yes.
Well, how about they don't keep up the roundabout itself, like cave it in again or whatever.
So that would only stay on.
Right, so they, for their responsibility, yeah.
Yeah, and municipality becomes the owners of all traffic, it puts signals.
But the roundabout, but, but if there's any green space, could those.
That's their responsibility.
Well, I mean, they put them roundabouts and they, they widen the road there, that's why I asked the question about Jakes.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I, I can't recollect what the total impact was there, but there was the impacts from every property in that area. Now, uh, Mr. Jarvis may have just misspoke or maybe his, his memory was a little faded, uh however, he once sent a letter by PENDOT about that, inviting them to the meeting, explaining to them that there was a potential for impact to their property, my understanding is that uh the Jason Mariotti, who married up the owner of Jake's fireworks, uh was, did not find it that that was something that he could travel from Missouri to Pennsylvania for, was not as important enough.
Yeah, so on this, their, I was like, they were after this, if they found out to the right of one of these six feet on their side, six feet on the other side, how would the roundabout, or is it more or less they could take some of their property?
They would take it, I mean, there's also, there's also a pipeline everybody in there, which could be impacted at any time if the pipeline says we're doing this now, you know? So they have, they, that, that property is not a, it's a lot of work on it.
I, I just have reservations with the close proximity of the two roundabouts, well, the Lord's vale and the South vale, uh that's from the ninety five. Oh, it's gonna be two lights, it's gonna be two roundabouts, right? Yeah.
Yeah, well, two lights. So I, think about, think about that, if you have any questions or anything that you wanna answer, if you get them to me, I can go over to Vince and ask him for further follow-up, um but they're looking for answers, we have to do that by next, uh.
You said, you said this time, I was gonna go, right?
Yeah, I swear to God, yeah, I got it later at the end of the week. Uh COVID nineteen update, the uh, the offices are now further open for, for people coming, we're still using the process of people leaving, dropping permits and stuff in the drop box, however, we are now at a point where someone requested a document, we're here to give them that document, we have a box of leftover pens from the county for next year, uh that we are giving out to people to use so that, you know, they want, and no cost to the taxpayers, township taxpayer dollars. Uh the gym is being opened during the day hours, uh from seven to two, we are starting to see a few of the usual, uh new users come in for uh using the track, also trying to set up some online uh activities that are going on throughout the day, that people could come in here and deal with their shoes, yoga, uh some other things like that, so we're starting to, you know, a little bit by a little bit, uh open back up, further along, Nicole's gonna talk about it next week, but in her uh packet, there are um waiting requests for the fields, so the sports are getting back up and running, so uh as long as, you know, potentially does not have a significant update, so we can kinda, we'll kinda be taking it into the right direction here. Uh the other, other item I have is uh lead collection, uh so uh we talked a little bit about this with the Yorktown property, but I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, um we had looked at delinquent trash, and we had found that there was a significant amount of delinquent trash sitting down there over the previous seven years that was not being collected. Basically, we were a guest collector, someone came in to the tax department and said, hey, I'm gonna pay my own for the trash bill, she accepted, we did, we did the resources from that, however, there was no one going out to people saying, hey, you know, you owe seven years worth of trash, pick up six years worth of trash, pick up. So we have a similar process with the leads, uh the leads get satisfied when properties are sold, and there's not really much activity trying to collect all those leads prior to that, and uh the leads that we have are starting to compile a significant amount of outstanding money on these leads. So what I'm interested in doing is looking at Municipal Resource Recovery Service, who collects the delinquent trash wars, to have them as the lead collector for the township. So they would work on the previous leads for us to try to get some of that money back, and then uh from new lead perspective, uh we went through the invoicing, like we currently do whenever we need to maintain a property that's either unby bank or a situation there where it's no longer being maintained, uh and then when we go to do the lead, instead of us housing in here and waiting for someone to take over the property, there would be a ask over Municipal Resource Recovery Services, who frankly has, has better resources to be able to collect on that, uh and, and with better resources to, 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 to collect on that at the time of sales. So I would like to ask the board next week to consider amending the current contract we have with them to include the collections of leads, and that, uh, that amendment is in your packet as well.
George, it, 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 I mean, if the banks are on it, I mean, we're getting them at the sale, and how long are they sitting, remember, Matt, get?
Uh I, I mean, it depends what I'm asked, I mean, really.
How long?
Yeah, like, so, so, so the issue is, is like, a portion of them get paid every year, I don't get wrong, it's a pretty good collection on that basis, but it's like, there's some that are just sitting and building and building and building, right? Like, for instance, if there's a, let's say someone, someone has a serial property owner in Delaware County, doesn't smoke, right? Mike's probably have a better MRRS, which, you know, like, is, is on the firm, would have a better ability to go after them individually to collect those funds prior to us waiting for a particular, so. You get a lot of properties like that and transfer like that?
I'm, I'm just concerned about maybe somebody that can't really afford it, that they had something going on, we got to do it in, in Murray's, you know, the main room house, how are they gonna pay, you know, are they gonna be penalized with them tomorrow?
Well, right now, they are repenalized because they're, they didn't leave law against them with the interest and everything, so I, I think it would be probably a little bit easier because they're more capable of payment programs, and, and also because they aren't a collector like that, they handle a lot of these types of situations, the board, you know, they initially, for us, they would just have to pay the, like, come in eventually and just pay a full amount, you know?
I mean, the board did also have some type of, um, I guess settlement with any type of lead, if there's any hardships or, I mean, the board did, uh, we, we, the board, they've worked with people, you know, it's, or, I'm sorry, the trash liens, and we've had instances when they're, when they have come up, and there are payment lines that are closed, and, you know, certainly we can do money, but it's done, we would not be in a position where we would waive any of the monies which are pledged to the customers, correct?
Yeah, and the customer service level there is really good, I mean, I, I've not had a single person call me ever since we started my business with them and say, I have made experience with them, typically getting notification that you got paid a lot of this, made experience, you know, so.
Right, um, any, any questions for our manager?
One, one quick one, George, is the, the reassessment, is the second round of uh assessments coming after the re- upon one?
Yes, so.
Yeah, cause I gotta come talk to them.
I got mine mailed today, so the, the, the assessment, the, when your property is assessed back, is, was being mailed out July first, so it mailed it from that original number you got, whether you did something or not.
Now, is that the final one?
That is your assessment, and there are instructions in there about how you can appeal that if you feel that it's, we do. We have not gotten the total assessment yet, um, we, the last meeting I had with the county was just what a while ago on this, they had said they weren't gonna give them to us right away in July because they anticipated that there was gonna be another, a lot of people coming in, and they didn't want us to.
Then we'll have to adjust our mileage.
So yeah, so once we get that in, we'll know what our total assessed value, what the township is, we'll take what our revenues are and divide it with our, this total assessment or assessment.
I would say, take the current, you just take the current value versus the new value, and if it's, it's a function of that number, that's the function you create your mileage.
I can bring out the whiteboard and you do this.
So can I? And I was asked, and I was asked not to do that.
But we're gonna be good, um, and, you know, Mr. Neri.
I'm pretty happy on a sneer side.
Mr. Neri.
Cause of.
But we will.
Figure out the three fractions.
And we, what we absolutely, once we did that number, we'll take a look at that.
Now, this was eyes were going up when you started talking about that, right?
We all.
All right, let's move on to our, uh, community reports, we'll start with our, like, chairman to do that.
Thank you, um, highway sanitation, I was trying to, like George was saying earlier, we're starting to plan more of the projects, again, get back on schedule and all. Um, sanitation, uh, George, I might give you to help me with this, with this, with this recycling, we're gonna try a new system where we're gonna notify the residents if they're recycling properly, not give them warnings, and uh, you, you saw I got a copy of it here, Ben, tonight, but I'll let George go with a little detail of that.
Yeah, so, um, you know, obviously, one of the big costs with recycling is the uh, is the trash that's in recycling, uh and we've been getting a lot of pushback from the uh, the, the recycling center about, about the trash and recycling. So we, we, we set up, we did a little bit of an education campaign earlier this year, obviously with COVID nineteen, we got a little bit lost there, uh so what the, what the sanitation department has come up with is a series of notifications to try to help properties that are having trouble determining what to recycle. Uh essentially, the way it would work is, uh they would, if, if they approach a property, they open up the recycling and there is trash in there, so for instance, uh one of the things we've been getting a lot of recently is grass clippings in the recycling, so uh we open up and there's bagged grass clippings in the recycling, we would, on the first day, we would give them a hand day, ask them to contact us, we would put the, we would basically take it with the trash, and they would contact us, we'd talk to them about what was wrong with the recycling, okay, they'll look at that on it, uh and then go on a very way. The second time it happens at a property, we would tag it again, and at this time, we would leave the trash, uh, the trash recycling. We would have the conversation with them, and if there is an available truck in the area, we would send a truck back to pick it up. On the third time that it happens, we would give them the notification and then we would leave the, leave the recycling, we would not send the truck back to pick it up. If there is a fourth time that it happened, we do have to go against this and we would have to go to the line, uh, so, um, we're hoping that, you, you know, obviously, it's just gonna be working with people helping them out, um, you know, we're still gonna take it on that first time, we're gonna go back and pick it up on the second time, so we, hopefully we can, this will help to educate some of the properties that are still having a lot of trouble. Uh, they have notified me that in general, it's getting better, um, however, we, we are getting those pockets of like, it's like grass, so grass is not recycled.
How much, how much is the fine?
How much, how much is the fine, what we deliver it to the study versus the.
I think it's seventy-five dollars a load.
Yeah, seventy-five dollars a load. The issue, the only issue is that if you, so contact, I contacted the homeowner to kind of get a little bit more information about it. The issue is, I mean, we can eat that seventy-five dollar on a couple of times. The issue is, the more they do, the more they're gonna turn to go away. And the other thing is, it's also driving off the price that we're paying for the load. So I think this is a very good method. I think we can tweak some of the language on there, just to make a little more user, customer feeling, and then, you know. I think it is a good idea, it has been used in this balance before the success.
Like, one of the biggest problems is everybody will put in their cans or their bottles and an old market bag, an old market bag is your note. You know, I mean, you know, you mean a plastic bag?
Yeah, it's recyclable. I mean, I've done it, I didn't know, but I've become more aware and go through a lot of the residents.
Can we put them down as more, more examples and stuff like that?
I think it's on there.
It is.
It's one of the.
Plastic bags.
Yeah, contain plastic bags, not acceptable. Uh, I say, uh, they love telling me. All right, thanks, George. City one, sewer water utilities, I have the sewer report on file, but nothing crazy going on. I'd like to address some, two other things. I wanna ask the board's permission to, Mike can contact Aston Township. Looks like there's activity over there on that project they wanna build the backs up to Somerset. They're tagging trees and.
I did contact them, so, and I got an email to go to here. So basically, what they're doing, they said, they're still decorating back there. They don't have a final plan in yet. So like, they've got final approval, but like, what we talked about today, with like that whole H O P process, you know, the third-party circles. They don't have anything that, so they don't have a record plan in Aston. And I talked to Carol in her office, and she said she didn't anticipate that record plan coming in until next September.
Please, this is.
That's fine, I'm fine.
George and I will.
We're gonna call him. Right, he's giving me, we have answers in there. And then my other issue is on the, the houses on the, I think the five hundred block of Monticello, the brick behind there. We've had issues before. Some of the residents are having some complaints. I have a meeting set up Tuesday night at six o'clock there, and I'd like to have the engineer present, if possible. One of the things I'm trying to line up is the Boy Scouts coming in and cleaning the creek out for all the residents. And the highway guy who picked the trash up at the two corners, you know, I'm in contact with them. But some of the issues are, like, trees hanging into their yards that look like they're gonna come down. And the big question is, who's responsible for the trees? Us, the residents? I mean, George and me were talking about it, like, we're responsible for the cleanliness of the water. They're responsible for everything else. I mean, we have no easements, get in there, do anything. So I'd like to take an engineer over if I can.
George, didn't you say because of the same issue with Mill Road, the river owns a property, the tree fell off it, into the creek, they're responsible for it?
Yeah, it's a much smaller creek. So basically, you're on, they're on the properties, we tell you on the properties. I think it's worth taking a look at this because this has been one of those ones that came up a lot for, it runs along a bunch of property lines back. And the way the creek has moved over time, it's taken, it's kind of basically lost some stuff, you know, like structures and things they have there. So I think it's worth having someone over there to take a look at it, and get them some advice on what they can do. Because there's some things, like, you know, obviously, doing work in the creek is gonna cause, you know, the permitting and things like that. But there could be some things they can do with the Boy Scouts properties that help that out.
What else I'm gonna look at is, I'm gonna see if there's any of the, anything we do there helps us with this MS four. You know, can we get some credits for doing something?
Just cleaning it out.
Right, I mean.
Joe, I'll find you.
I have an answer here.
I'm sure.
It's Tuesday at six, Joe?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna cover you.
And you'll check, you, I don't care who it is, I just, you know, I ain't qualified to answer some of their questions. I have someone there. Thanks, that's all I have.
Joe, just real quick, is there also more, new trash more, close, you picked up on it?
I got the phone call, the notification. Did everybody get their call?
Yes.
Yes.
If there's no other questions for Commissioner Bateman, we'll move on to Commissioner Nicole Whitaker.
Commissioner Whitaker will be giving a presentation on our committees next Thursday. There are a couple of line items that I'll go over. Parks and Recreation Month is in July, and there's a Parks Professional Recreation Proclamation that we'd like to do. We've gotten, obviously, with everything being open back up, we've got a lot of comments requests, and there's a few leaders. So people requesting the need to be renewed for lower. So that's something to discuss. The lead that is the only actual one, actually, just.
Okay, I have a question about somebody's field request.
Sure.
Just so you know, what it says in the field request, it says seventy-five percent of players are remunerated access for township. I hope you had this discussion before where we said they could be members of school districts.
Yeah, the board agreed that the seventy-five percent would be from the school district.
Okay, then we need to change that, okay. Because even with that, all right, it would appear, well, I think, I think if it is seventy-five percent, then we're okay.
There's one, I believe, that's pretty close.
Yeah, well, the state warriors were five, three, five in Upper Chi, three in the district, four outside. So that's actually on two departments.
Which one was that?
The first one.
Yeah.
The other one, the others, which are, okay, according to, if we change the paperwork to where it's a school district, which is what I thought we agreed to go ahead to. But that one, and I could be wrong on the addresses, but I believe there are four from outside the district. There's one from Boell, one from Westchester, and a Chai one. There's one from Newcastle. Woods, yeah, and Woods giving drive in the Grand Valleys and outside the township as well, so that's the. But I will go over with you. If you want later, I have the numbers. I think that might be all the questions.
Yeah, Brian has some more information of this, George.
Okay.
The biggest point, I think, that was kind of condescending, is this, Jack's Hall is where, Jack's Hall is looking to do a camp here. Right, they play store in the day. I believe it's from P Y C, and since they kind of shut down their buildings, they're not, they're not, it's a camp. Jack is a resident, he puts his research to him, and he wants to have his ball camp. So he basically will be for his food reduction to do a family, so one week. And the reduction will be the, taking the delivery to a hundred and twenty-five a day. Which I do think is a reasonable rate. We're not getting a ton of traffic in the gym right now at this point. I don't anticipate by then, but we'll be very excited.
How many people will be coming in?
He has to stick to the guidelines of, like, he has a whole waiver that he would have to sign, he has to stick to the guidelines of everything. And he's pretty good with that, he needs to do this for some property, he wants to.
All right, there's, does anybody have any comments, questions for the calls to reports? So if you can bring it to our session. If not, we'll move on to Commissioner Everett.
Thank you. Want to put a thank emergency management team, reports in your, everybody's file right now. I wanna thank Phil Robinson and Carl Smith on acquiring one thousand base vests. And just to get a stockpile here, because it's only emergencies, I mean, you go up here, but digging up out to some of the party departments each individually, it's a package of five. Wanted to thank them on that. They have been pretty busy in the month of June. Some of us have seen all of them mess around on Beatty Alster. We had a, we're making break on Beatty Alster by ride, there's a mess over there, if you couldn't clean that up, that would be nice for a lot of water over there, so. Chexel Ford and Chi Avenue, and Payter at the Ford, and Water Mountain right there, everything just happening in one shot. And just wanted to remind everybody, emergencies did begin June first. There are no reading in July and August due to the summer, but they are actively available for anybody. They're gonna be purchasing some vests, they have their vests. There's about twelve members that are currently really interested into emergency management team. Become quite a bit, I won't believe at all. Looking at the report that Fire Marshal had together before, fronted all out in zones for emergency declarations. Working on all that, working on breaks to electricity, I have to help with where road, to found those significant problems over there. Wobba, wobba apartments, they lost power a lot. So they're pretty busy for the month of June. So if you guys could read the report, that would be great. The D C E D study is here. We met, I think, twenty second of June. They do have some questions. I'm asking the board tonight for some dates that are out there for to meet with the D C E D and then, you know, conduct the study or Q and A. There's a lot of Q and A and questions from the, from the committee. And I had no answers because I wasn't the one that put the study together. I just had the answers of the gentleman put together. So on that same note, I was trying to, unfortunately, we have the gentleman that does, did this study, but we don't have the main guy from D C E D because it changed things, we have a root proxy. So we need to give her a little bit of time to fill out her team, but she doesn't know any of the team members. And then also look at our report, two hundred and five pages, which she has not seen yet. So I would like to try something here, set up a Zoom meeting, because they're not allowed to come out of house at this time. With the board of commissioners and our committee to have some kind of Q and A with the study, with file. Hey, that did the study, and then the new lady from the D C E D, you can run that. Just if anybody has any questions or answers and how it came up with some of these things, if you guys read the study, that's good. If not, like I said before, a lot of it came out of the census. But there's a lot of good points in there that I highlighted that, in the front part, tells you the results. And a lot of it, it does cover the finances, it does give them ideas of how to keep their equipment, sell their equipment, and try to put it in an outline of how to just sell it. But there's a lot of questions that they need answered, so, um. I'm gonna throw out an email to them, or an email out to the board commissioners to take a few dates to do it, and that would be great. I just could put out the advertising, there's a good gift, it's more than a breakfast there because of this. But I'm gonna move forward with this, and see what comes out of it. On that note, we got an email yesterday, late yesterday afternoon, I don't know if I got it. I did mention this, either last month or one or other meetings, that they were thinking about starting to do things as one as Upper Charters to Fire Department. And at this time, on August first, the chiefs came up and the president, so it's a letter, I don't know if everybody has it in their package tonight, a letter from each county, from the president and their chief, signed. And then August first, they're gonna run as Upper Charters to Fire Department. With the new number, as we did with the Medicare, the E H S council did some kind of support from the board commissioners to proceed with the Medicare. At this time, in nine one one center, the director, Tim Voice, was requesting some kind of their letter from the board commissioners. Support, this agreement has an operational agreement between all three fire companies. All three fire companies still consist. They'll just be running out of one location, that Bruce one fire. This is a month-to-month basis, there is an act for every fire company. If it doesn't work, they're hoping that's not the, that's not the plan, they want to keep moving. This is step one, there's other steps in this, in the report from the D C E D, whether it's the bylaws and anything else. A plan on what they want to try to do, three-to-five-year plan, five-to-seven-year plan, and then the seven-to-ten. But don't know if they act on this tonight, but I know they, we're trying to get this out to the nine one one center. That they want to support better, it's up to the board commissioners. I think it's a good idea to start this, to move forward, and to continue moving forward as one. Like I said, they just want, the director from the nine one one center wants to know that the board commissioners are all aboard with this and they're okay. If anybody have any questions about that letter.
My understanding is they were trying to get the letter tomorrow morning if possible, or Monday morning, two days. My question, is my question to Mike, is this required formal with the board to set up?
I would do it as a formal vote, it's an advertised meeting, we can do it. If there's some time and strength to do it, sure, it's not a problem.
Yeah, I think we should subdue the board and, yeah, consider this really the most.
I mean, I'm moved to, according to that, I was like, and I'll move to send a support letter in this operational plan for their purchase of the fire department. And then we can.
I'm fine, if the board wants to move on it tonight, I typically, you know, vote on things at the commissioner's meeting. But since this is, our fire companies are trying to get this up and running as soon as possible. And if it's something that we need to send to the nine one one center, I would say that we approve it tonight. So that way, it's official. And I think the, the, the center is under full understanding that the township just has full support with this operational plan presented by, by the three fire companies. So I would say vote on it tonight, and I can sign it.
All right, good.
You have a motion.
All for vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eddie Lewis, the guy's had the official's carry. Let me just suggest it to announce it next week, the meeting, if you come this way, and, yes. I was just waiting for a official comment, if you guys have it.
And then the other thing under other, which can wait till next week, because I know the chiefs, there's an issue regarding the signature cards. Signature cards, or the cards that go up to the nine one one center, that's how we dispatch, and that's how we protocol individual incidents. Who gets dispatched, and where, since protocol in the past, you know, put it out there, for example, that the three chiefs, the three chiefs of each fire company, when they met, they would do all the decision-making. And it's either unanimous or two to one. Cards were changed, Dave Holland or past Fire Marshal would give the authorization that fire board would have a change. At this time, we have them voted officially, and things are starting to get changed. And I want to respond back to the chiefs on who they appoint. Typically, it would be the Fire Marshal, that's how it wasn't passed. We're gonna have it in them right now. There's no card changes right now, as of this time, due to the letter that's going out, this is just response. They would do it as Upper Chi Fire Department. Just every, every incident, fire, rescue, whatever, will go through the new number and has Upper Chi Fire Department. I want to get hold of that, so we can bring the recommendation back, so we can get this letter drafted out to the nine one one center again. Any questions Jordan and I would have, or Mr. Voice would be, is, can we have it already? In case the other individuals stand, we just need to make sure, if we never had one before, we don't know if they acquired it all in it. But I want to make sure the three chiefs are involved, so nobody's saying everyone behind the backs. Protocol in years past has always been the three chiefs made the decisions, and Mr. Holland did the paperwork at nine one one. I just want to make sure. Holland did the paperwork at nine-one-one, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page the next week, so we can get this letter back out to the nine-one-one center, so we have it all, for the town. That's all I have for the other.
Thank you. Okay, um, no other questions for Special Orkaski, we'll move on to the commissioners.
Hey, Mr. President, the administration reports will be available, the administration and financials will be available next week, there's a partial list that goes in your packet, which will be added too, because we'll run checks again next week. I do have a question on one of the track three funds, so I'll bring that up to you. And there's also a request from the police for a temporary handicap party requested they just don't change this, or, I forget which one it was, I know it's.
Yeah, it's in the.
Yeah, I'll get your.
Well, regardless, we'll, we'll.
Yeah. We'll get that, it's a request for an approval out of the police department, and so we'll be considering that next week, and that's all I have on my report, I do have something under cover when we get to a meeting at the end, or maybe do it now, either work that out. This would be under the business, this would be the Creekside issue that I've mentioned a couple of times, Creekside, the developer has not responded to several calls from Lisa, as she indicated, and they, and they're, they've been dragging up the on some improvements. So, what I would like to do is basically put them on notice that if they, the developer, do not move forward with completing any of your punch lists, the town supports, or it's a legal request.
I'll take a look at the, sure, take a look at.
I mean, we can wait till next week to finalize that, I'll just bring it out next week for some type of approval.
Is that the, the house?
Yeah, the twelve amendments, yeah, they're just going back and forth with them stuff, and I think it's, it's not unimportant, it's minor work, but I don't know why they're dragging their, it's not the light case, but the real level of work that needs to be done, but it's annoying work, it needs to be finished, so that the, um, the Mini Motors Association feels that, you know, that they should be involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if there's no other questions for Mr. Manieri, we'll wrap up with my report, Auto Zone, Jake's Fireworks, Beenhundruck, over at Avenue, that whole avenue that he mapped, we all covered those tonight, obviously, we'll do a loan zone, Jake's Fireworks next week. Uh, we too have two zoning application, hopefully, I believe this will be presented in July, one is for a rear yard setback, which is in my board, and there's another hearing, a Commissioner Baca's board, that's the one we talked about, that territory apartments, I believe.
Yeah, I've been getting a lot of calls from the residents, looks, looks more than.
So, they're asking, they're asking for a zoning variance to exceed a fifteen-hundred for those accessory structure, and they're asking to provide a twelve-foot distance between buildings in lieu of thirty-five with minimum requirement, this is going, as I said, this is going to be for the zoning board, this is a zoning board decision and not a decision for the board commissioners to make. If you do have any concerns about any of these, that we can talk about it next week, we can talk about it tonight, and as we always do, write a letter, if you have any concerns of the board you might have.
Do you think that's kind of tight, twelve foot?
Or you can be putting it in the building?
Yeah. Usually goes for thirty-five?
I think, I think you probably would want to get the Fire Marshal to flip as far as fire safety, safety is a real issue on that. That's good. Well, there's, there's no way in between there, I mean, you have an existing building and then they want twelve feet, and the reason why, I believe I indicate the reason why they're not coming right up against the building is, I think there's one of those there, so, but, you know, we can always get the Fire Marshal's input this.
Yeah, because I believe code would facilitate the building material construction because of the distances, but I think we couldn't necessarily, if you have community, I think right there, the ordinance is set with a distance for certain reasons, so you can't. Those variances are for a couple of feet, you know, twenty-five, three, you're asking more than two-thirds.
What's this door, this, that's a story? All I'm pretty mad, or?
It's a mixed use, it's a mixed use of office space, and I believe a laundry metal, so. Anyway, I'd like to wrap up, Kate's Glen, I'd just like to thank everybody for working with me on that, I mean, you were the drive out there, they are making significant process. I know a couple of residents live out there, had talked about the bounds of soil that had been left over, a couple of amounts have been significantly reduced, but there are some amounts out there that, you know, it's quite noticeable, I'm hoping the town could utilize any extra topsoil to do any backfilling, and I believe there's going to be some potential upon the town site here at the municipal building, so as much as we can use or remove, I'm hoping that the board will be applicable to that, I don't think there's any legal ramifications for removing it, but I'd just like to bring that up.
Sure. Now, you can't remove the topsoil, but how it comes from?
Well, I mean, it's a town.
Right.
But, again, we're trying to remove the ice shore, the residents are trying to remove as much of the ice shore as possible, so, like, if you can look into that.
Yep.
I would appreciate that. Jennifer Way, there was a project that was, there was a project that was trying to be started about a week ago, there are some easement issues that we're trying to work out, so I talked to the Tanya Engineering about moving that project up until we get easement issues settled, and also the contracts that aren't signed yet, I mean, that's, that's another issue that we have to resolve if the contractor starts, so, just want to make the board aware that that is underway, and the zoning map, is there any update as far where we stand with it, and when, when, when do you think we could have that zoning map updated, you don't have the answer right now.
I, I had a discussion with Lisa, and her understanding is that a zoning map has been submitted to the township for a few foot and feet back before we can define it, so I think it sounded like it was in your hands as far as.
Well, we asked, we asked to make some specific changes based on zoning ordinances that we passed, there was a disconnect between our zoning ordinances that we passed and what was being shown on the map, so, I'd like to sit down with Lisa, Charlie, and Robert George to get this resolved, because Charlie's our zoning officer, you know, I just, I hope, I want them, I want them interacting together, so that I can put this to bed. I don't have anything else at the moment, anybody have any questions for me?
On, on down line? I asked him today to call the contractor to get the equipment built up, because they have, they just don't have to move it, they still have not, they just said.
I'm trying to verify if I really have the CD.
I go past the board, so they, you know, when we, when I left here.
I'll double check, because I'll write it right now.
I'll try to answer that, try to die.
My biggest concern with this project is, is if we can't find an easy access to, to access the project site, the contractor knocked on a couple of the resident stores asking, you know, hey, we want to get back there, we have easements, and the residents weren't aware that the project was as, as, as many, so I just want to make sure that all that's, if we have to go down that route, I just want to make sure that everything is booked out, you know, the residents are verified, so, there might be some issues with structures built on our right away, so if we need to get back there through those areas, I'd just like to have a discussion with the owners there, you know, what needs to be done to rectify, I don't know if I go down that route, but I just, that's something that I had mentioned to them a little bit, a while ago also. That's all, that's all that I have, any questions for me?
Mike, I have a question. I was given this afternoon a resolution from bar, that this, this would be something that next week, if you were interested in, is to make application to the Defense Banking Department, help Walker Lily Grant, this grant would be to produce an active transportation plan to identify multiple transportation improvements, I D, sidewalk connections, public transportation areas, bike lanes, and identify connectivity destinations along Market Street, Ch�as Road, Route three twenty-two, and I ninety-five, connecting roadways, private testing projects related to transportation, utilizing existing plans, so what I did was I asked her to initially giving us this resolution by next week, if she could give us a process to know how much she thought it would cost us for the professionals to worry about this, as well as the time that it would take, when next week she was going to start again, and it's examples of some active transportation plans, so she'll give me that through this week.
So, my only concern with the grant is we know how residents feel when we say we're going to put sidewalks in, and you're going to have to take responsibility over sidewalks, so, that's my only concern with the grant, I know, it's, it's nice to have walkways, it's nice to have lightways, but that's my concern is after we install them, who's going to maintain the sidewalks, if they're going on people's properties, you know, I'm sure the town's not going to maintain the sidewalks for years to come, because we would have to dedicate it back to residents, so.
Yeah, so, well, definitely look at the information we received, because this would be a plan that leads to a plan, that leads to a plan, so, you know, we just got to see is this something you feel that could be, or a model which has to go.
We got the grant, we could, where we could use it, right?
We could.
Well, it's not for installation, this is for the planning documents, so it would be a planning exercise that says, hey, we want to do, we want to have an active transportation plan, and where the planning exercises are supposed to produce tangible projects that we can do, so that we can go out and try to improve infrastructure, I guess kind of the question I had here is, we've had a lot of developers come in, and there's always been a back and forth about, should they have to put inside walls, should we have to put inside walls, should we have to improve that, this, should they not, there's been questions on the three twenty-two project, when they came in, should it have light lanes, should not have light lanes, so, I think that you just need to read through this plan and see if this is something that you guys believe is, you know, yourselves are in commission, it's more the direction.
Is it just a plan?
It's just.
Or is it?
Plan document.
Yeah, or is it a course of action to actually install it?
No, there's no, there's no, I'm sorry, because I, I, it's basically, it's active transportation plan to do like connectivity of Chi Chester, Chi Chester, and then Market Street, non-interconnecting roads, and then basically see what opportunities there are, so basically the plan, you know, the projects, the recommendations, and then it's also helping connect three twenty-two plan, women's lights plan, then you have a safety study for Penn Dot, it's all the plan, all the projects that we're doing, trying to make sense into a strategic, I guess, transportation plan, and that will help us get the fleet streets, which we really want later, and then it'll help us with funding sources, and you need these plans to get funding sources for grants emissions for other projects, like road projects, streets projects, if you want store water project, if you want public transit, so if you have this plan, then you go for the projects, break emissions.
So, Mark, I think you need to make sure that if it forces the next week, you give the board, how can the application, examples of active transportation plans, and then those tangible projects that the towns, that it could turn into for the town, because again, we want to make sure that we're presenting the board with planning documents, and these are planning documents that have tangible projects that the board can prove that it bind to for, for infrastructure projects, that we don't want to get caught into a, some doing it then and giving it out to the public, and it being documented, we can't, it can't.
I have a plan of break, so I can.
But it could be, it could be just a small plan, a bookwork already started, but then we're going to have to check this, and it's, it's going down to our, to.
That's, that's what it is.
And just, just interconnect that, that's it.
Right.
Again, so like an active transportation plan is a physical type of a planning document, so I suggest, like, you can Google active transportation plan, and see what that is before you make a decision, you can send you examples, so that you understand what it is, and you understand what the product would be.
I'm thinking of the grant itself, like, and talk to some others.
Alright, um, I just have one more for you.
To Jake Breaks, where do we have that for the Penn Dot, did we ever send a hundred to that, to Long Lakes with the road, and I heard a warehouse, we said.
I can tell them if I can see.
I'll check on that, I'm not sure that we identified the exact road that was on it, but I'll, we'll check.
Okay, so, I think it was.
I can, to her? All in favor?
Aye.
Questions, carry. Thank you.